Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome everyone to what we're calling a joint work session between the Rutherford County Commission and the Rutherford County Planning Commission. And I'd like to thank all of you for being here today. I've kind of looked around the room and I see, of course, members of the planning staff here and members of the county commission and members of the planning commission. I also see some members of our BZA here tonight, our mayor here tonight, and other elected officials. And I'd like to thank you guys for your presence tonight and your participation. The way this thing is going to work is I'm going to turn this thing over to Michael Skipper here in just a minute. And him and Jessica will kind of take us through this process and where we are. But just kind of a brief history, most of you know this, but way back in the, it was around 2008, the county started the process of looking at a long-term comprehensive land use plan, worked on it a couple of years, and adopted our first plan back in 2011, instituted probably in 2012. So it's about 12, 13 years old at this particular point in time. A lot has changed in the last 10, 12 years, so it's time to update that plan. And that's what we've been working on for the last two years. I get a little impatient. I've pushed the planning staff to speed the thing up, but slow and steady will win this race. And the pace has been acceptable to all of us because we want to get it right. Let me just say that this process that we're going through right now, to me, there's nothing more important that us as a county government will be doing. This term, we will be looking at what our county should look like over the next 10, 20, 30, or even 40 years. And a lot of those includes certain things as to what type of development should go where. And that includes commercial, industrial. It also includes residential and some planned units as well. So what we've done over the last, almost the last two years, more intensely the last year, is to go throughout the community, develop a lot of community input. And what we're seeing tonight is the first draft of that community input. This is what people are telling us that they want and that what they want the county to look like in the future. So thank you once again for being here. Michael Skipper and Jessica Hill are with the Greater National Regional Council and have spent a lot of time with Doug and his staff developing this plan. And I've seen a draft of it, and I'm really excited about this presentation. And I hope that you will pay attention. You can probably pick up a copy of the draft. I think we have a few of them here. As we go through this process, if there are any pertinent questions, we'll entertain those as we go through the process. Our preference is to wait till the end, and we'll have a question and answer session at the end of this. So you guys can write your questions down, make a mental note, and we'll try to address as many of those as we can and still get out of here at a decent hour tonight. So once again, thank you for being here. I heard a little story about, at a kind of a dinner or banquet that I was at a couple of weeks ago, that talked about Alice in Wonderland. You probably have heard this many times. Alice in Wonderland and Alice fell down a rabbit hole and was lost, came to a crossroads, and that crossroad, she got really confused as to which road to take, looked up in a tree, and there was a smiling cat. I think they called it a Cheshire Cat. And the Cheshire Cat asked Alice if she had some, a question or two, and she said, "Which road do I take?" And the cat said, "It depends on where you want to go." And she said, "I don't know where I want to go." And the cat says, "Well, it doesn't matter which road you take." And that's what we're trying to accomplish tonight is to, is to make sure we know which road to take and where we're going. So once again, thank you for your participation here tonight. And I'll turn it over to Pettis. You have any comments?
Chairman Phillips, you fairly well have covered it. And I know these people are ready to go on and see what has been done over the past, I guess you said, as you said, two years. It seems like we've been going on forever. We've seen seasons change. We've seen weather change. And I think that what we have done here is something that's going to make a little bit of difference within Rutherford County. I just happened when I left the house today, in my office, this shows up. This is what we gave a lot of the people when they attended some of the events we went to. And on the back of it, it caught my attention. Plan Rutherford, Planner for a Day Instructions. Now, if it was this simple, we would have been through a long time ago. But you know, it's a lot harder than just being a planner for a day and following these very simple instructions. We had to take everything that everybody said. We had to take everything that we have as new ideas. Rutherford County is changing. And not only is changing, say, in just a few years, it's changing overnight in some places. So what we have tried to do is try to come up with something that we, as the chairman has said here, we're looking way out there. What will Rutherford County look like in the next several years? And if you don't plan for your future, you're going to end up getting the same thing you've always got. And we hope tonight you'll have an opportunity to see some of the ideas. You'll see some of the things that we're going to have to do. But let me remind you, this is the comprehensive plan that we're just starting with. It's not totally finished, but there's a lot of things will come after this. A lot of things that you will have to do to make it all work and put the puzzle together. We're glad to have all of you here. We appreciate Middle Tennessee State University for allowing us to use their facilities and be here. I don't think you could find a better place to be to have this. You know, I was standing over there while they're going to look, and it looked like every one of you was shot out of a shotgun while you're sitting in here. But it gives everybody a plenty of room, and I hope that you'll get something for this. And be sure, if you have those questions, to give those to us so that we can put those in there too. So I believe we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairs, for that, those opening remarks. Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Skipper. I'm with the Greater Nashville Regional Council. Don't be distracted by the name of the city in our title. We're a regional economic development and planning organization that was created by the state legislature back in the mid-'60s to help communities across 13 counties plan for, plan for their growth, create visions for economic development prosperity, and then to figure out how to plan for infrastructure and public services to enable that prosperity to come to fruition. So the work that we've been doing with you all over the last, it's been in this process about two years now, came right out of the pandemic, went right into elections. A lot of change has happened just in the last two years. But I, for my part, before I get into presenting the first draft of the plan to the two commissions this evening, I wanted to just remind everybody, you know, how we got here and why we plan and why Plan Rutherford and why now. And in part, it's because of the 30% increase in population since the last time you adopted your plan in 2011. That wasn't that long ago, and it's 30% increase in population since then. That's about 657 people per month being added to Rutherford County, a 37% increase in jobs since 2011. It's in part because of the change that's occurred since 2011, and it's important to continuously evaluate your comprehensive plan to make sure that it is accurately reflecting the vision of the community that it serves. But the other part is because we don't expect the pace of growth to slow anytime soon. Our regional forecasts that we prepare for the 13-county area include a forecast for Rutherford County that shows about another 63% growth in population between now and 2045. So you're looking at a countywide population of about 550,000 people, which would actually, when you look at the statewide forecasts, have you leapfrogging Chattanooga and Hamilton County in the county population rankings by 2045. So just imagine that, wrap your head around not only the change that you've seen since 2011, even the last two years since we've been working on this plan together, but what is still to come. And so these questions are really important. Also like this quote, I don't know where this came from, Jessica? Did we just make this up one day? Maybe we'll just call it an adage, old Chinese proverb. But we want to make sure that the change that we're seeing is leveraged and is leveraging the improvements we want to make in our community. Things are going to change. Change is inevitable. How do you get that change to work for you, to solve problems that are out there, to prevent other problems from popping up, to pursue dreams and visions that are unattainable now? It requires change to allow you to get there. And so I mentioned, we don't anticipate the pace of growth changing for Middle Tennessee or Rutherford County. But what the comp plan does is give you an opportunity to manage that growth in a way where you can leverage that change into prosperity. So for a little bit of a reminder of the process that we used to get to this first draft tonight, we've always talked about Plan Rutherford being divided into three phases. Phase one was really a listening tour, the county commissioners, the planning commissioners, members of the steering committee, just interested in engaging with residents, businesses, and developers, advocates across the county to understand what they like about living here, what they'd like to improve, what their expectations are out of county government as we move into the future, what they want the future to look like. So really, not a lot of talking on our part, other than just to show people recent trends and some analysis of the implications of the things that are changing in front of us. But this is really a listening tour that allowed us to understand what folks had in terms of a vision and a set of expectations for their community. And then we got into step two, phase two, which was really where we rolled up the sleeves and asked everybody to be planner for a day. We set up phase two by sharing forecasts of the year 2045 based on current public policy and current market preferences for how growth is occurring, kind of projecting that out to 2045, that over half a million people across the county. We predict where they will live and work at the parcel level, and we're able to translate that prediction into the impact on transportation, the impact on the environment, the impact on things that people said that they cared about during phase one, which was the listening tour. And so we essentially scored the future against the set of expectations that they told us that they had. And then we said, you know, be planner for a day. You know, the future doesn't have to be what we're predicting. How would you see the future? And to help equip them with some information to be able to feel confident in taking on that activity, we did some scenario planning. We prepared two alternative growth scenarios. These are alternatives to where we're headed on our trend line. One scenario took the same number of people and jobs that we were predicting for 2045 and organized them in a way that was a little bit more dispersed than the trend. So we sort of referred to that as the sprawl scenario. And then we did another scenario that organized the same number of people in a little more compact way. We sort of planned for that growth to go near existing communities, existing infrastructure, a little bit closer together. Not, not that everybody would be living on top of each other, but just weighted a little bit more towards a more compact development pattern. And then we scored each of those against the same set of metrics that we had evaluated the trend. And so people could see the trade-offs associated with growing through different strategies. You know, what were the benefits? What were the disadvantages of growing in a more dispersed way? What were the advantages? What were the disadvantages of growing in a more compact way? And I'm not going to sort of go through all that analysis tonight, but I think that was a really important part of the phase two because that allowed people to reevaluate what they had told us in phase one. So when we were asking that question initially about what do you want for the future, it was based on preconceived notions of what kind of development pattern creates what kind of outcomes. And so phase two really allowed us to engage people in a conversation about trade-offs. There's no perfect scenario for growth. You have a set of expectations, and one scenario might perform better for you. Somebody else has a different set of expectations, and they may prefer another scenario. Ultimately, why this isn't about being planner for a day is because it's our job to work with Doug and his staff and the commissions to come up with a really balanced view of the future and then to translate that into policies and recommended actions that the county could be taken to prepare for the future that is most aligned with the consensus of the community. Again, we rarely get to 100%, 100% consensus on anything, but if people can understand how we arrived at recommendations and feel like they were a part of their development, at the end of the day, people feel pretty good about those types of outcomes. And so we're in phase three now. We have been in phase three for the last couple of months. We've intensified our work with the steering committee. Ms. Allen, you chaired that up. And you were just talking about your collaboration with Jessica and our staff over the last couple of meetings. But this is where we begin, begin trying to figure out what's the best way to frame the vision? What's the best way to express that in terms of policies and recommendations? And so that's what we're going to share with you tonight. We've got the first draft. I call this a wireframe draft. If you are an architect or a software engineer, you know, a wireframe is sort of where you sort of sketch out the concepts. Don't put a whole lot of effort into high production quality because people might not agree with the concepts on the front end. So you sort of want to get everybody on the same page, get some reassurance that you're headed in the right direction. So that's what tonight's plan represents, is sort of that wireframe. But there's more built out when it comes to understanding the, sort of the purpose of the plan, how we engage the public. And what we're going to present tonight through Jessica is our recommendations for how to approach issues of land use and design through what we're calling a character area policy. And we've also got recommendations around the formation of policies that target the county's interest in seeing specific land uses occur in the right places over time. But this is not, if you're a planner by trade, that sort of old-school Euclidean land use plan where every parcel gets assigned a land use policy and becomes very rigid for the planning commission to work with, the development community and the residents to create the vision. This is a very flexible framework that we're sharing with the commissions tonight to get their feedback, just to make sure we're on the right page. So with that, let me move on into some of the metrics that we've been tracking in terms of engagement. And this is just direct engagement. We've had a lot of engagement through the networks associated with Plan Rutherford. But 27 stakeholder meetings today, over 300 workshop participants across the first two rounds that I've just described. And I wish this number was higher. The surveys are still open if you're interested, but over 800 people have participated in the surveys that we have administered throughout this process. Again, those will continue to be open, and we're not done engaging the community in this conversation. This is a map showing the distribution of where people live and work across the county and even beyond, in some cases, that have participated in this process. Just some imagery from the most recent scenario planning workshops, which were really a lot of fun. People sort of show up to these scenario planning workshops, a little bit skeptical about using markers and crayons and drawing, but after about five minutes of warm-up, people really got into the activity. Of course, this is imagery from the town hall that we had here, where we focused a lot on preservation of agricultural and working farms across the county. You'll see in the document a summary of key findings from the community engagement. It's just a snapshot of a board that we would take around everywhere we went and said, "This is what we've heard so far. Do you see it that way? Do you see it differently? If you saw it differently, we ask you to tell us how you saw it so that we can get that into the mix." But in the end, there were six themes that emerged, and I'm not going to dwell on these. They'll be in the document. But essentially, the idea that the county be proactive, proactive in its investments for infrastructure. It's really important that growth doesn't outpace the capacity of the infrastructure, and that was something that, you know, even people who have never even met a planner was able, were able to articulate fairly well. So everything from being proactive with investments in infrastructure to the other side of that spectrum, which is that it was still important to remain fiscally responsible to the taxpayers and make sure that every dollar invested by the county to support growth and development was a dollar well spent. From these, we arrived at our recommendations, working with the steering committee on a vision, a guiding vision statement, and a set of goals that we're going to present to you this evening. But first, and we can go ahead and start handing out, you already did. All right. Wow, that was very stealthy. You've got a document, it's got eight chapters in it. Chapters one through four are pretty well built out. Chapters five, six, and seven represent the work that is still left to do with the steering committee and Doug's staff. We've identified a lot of tools, a lot of potential actions that the county can be taking to achieve its goals, defining the specific objectives and the specific actions that would be a recommendation of the plan as the work that we will be doing over the next month while you all are reviewing the initial draft of the plan. And then we end with chapter eight here, which is all about recommendations for implementing the plan. As Chairman Phillips mentioned, the comprehensive plan is a policy document, is an advisory document, it's not a regulatory document as much as your zoning, your subdivision regulations are and the other codes that influence the outcomes that you see on the ground across the county. So we talk about the connectivity to those other tools that are required for implementation as well as partnerships that would need to exist to ensure the success of the plan. I've already mentioned this sort of in passing as I've rambled on here a little bit, but a little bit, you know, we're, just to be honest with you, full transparency, we weren't trying to knock it out of the park with visuals here. This is really, are we on the same page? Did we hear what you expected us to hear? Are we presenting this in a policy framework that makes sense for the county? And there's a lot of perspectives, a lot of users of this plan document, everything from homeowners to property owners to businesses and commercial to developers, to advocates for preservation and conservation. So it's got to be a policy framework that's understood by all of those perspectives. So it's a wireframe production to demonstrate our approach. It's also not a book report. Sometimes you'll see comprehensive plans that are 200 pages. The first 190 pages are just a bunch of maps and data describing what's happening in the county. That's good information. We have that information. We pulled some of it into the report, but that's its own separate technical report. If you're, if you really geek out on maps and charts and graphs, you'll find that probably spread out over a couple hundred pages. But that, this plan's about, you know, what are we trying to achieve and how are we going to achieve it? Emphasis on narrative and visuals will be, this, the emphasis was on the narrative, at least for the first four chapters. Emphasis on visuals will be, the visuals will be enhanced as we get through the second draft, which would be presented in about a month, and then the third draft, which would be the glossy version, very high-quality production by the end of October, to turn it over to the commission, the planning commission, to go through the public review and comment process, adoption, hopefully, and then on to the Board of County Commissioners for, for their adoption as well. Focus on purpose, policy, and proposed actions is where we are right now. So real quick, before I turn it over to Jessica, to get into the, the focus of draft one, which is the character area policy and the priority use, priority uses and our approach to identifying those. The guiding vision that has come out of the steering committee, "Rutherford County will be a community that celebrates its small-town heritage, natural resources, history, and values while advancing a diverse and prosperous future through responsible growth." And the last two words probably are the most meaningful in that entire sentence, which is this is all about making sure we're growing responsibly. There's a recognition that we've gained through this process that we're not going to be able to stop growth, may not even be able to influence the pace of growth. That is a function of market demand and individual property rights, but we can manage growth through various strategies that are within the control of county government and their partners. These are the four goals. This is a little bit different than the conversation we had with the steering committee, but we took your feedback that day and derived from, I think there were six, kind of consolidated that down to four. But everything that were in those draft goals are either integrated into these four or have been transitioned to a strategy or an objective. But the four goals are, goal number one is to manage growth. Goal number two is to preserve character. Goal number three is to enable prosperity. And goal number four is to align infrastructure. When we talk about managing growth, that's about making sure that we're guiding and promoting compatible development near existing cities, towns, and settled areas, of the incorporated areas to ensure that community benefits from new development in addition to those newcomers. Preserving character, this spans the objectives that you all have for slowing the rate of conversion of agricultural uses and working farms, trying to slow that conversion rate. We heard from our guest speaker at the town hall we had here a few months ago about just really how Rutherford County is outpacing many other places in Tennessee in the nation when it comes to the conversion of agricultural uses, which is fairly alarming to those who have, you who have been around for a long time. But preserving character extends also to those historical and cultural sites as well as the natural resources that are finite and vulnerable. And then enabling prosperity, this is where we get into making sure that the policies of the plan enable access to jobs and education and not just financial prosperity, but also prosperity in terms of social interactions with neighbors, being able to facilitate that. Also prosperity in terms of managing cost of living, which is something that I don't need to probably illuminate for you all in terms of the lack of affordability that we're beginning to see across Middle Tennessee, particularly when it comes to housing, but also transportation costs, utility costs, and other costs that are not discretionary in our budgets. And then goal number four is about aligning infrastructure. Clearly, transportation and dealing with the traffic issue and making sure that we're not approving development in places that have no hope of improvement to infrastructure anytime soon, but also just making sure that the infrastructure is not only there, but it's in a good, in a state of good repair and is of high quality so that it's good value for the tax money that is going into it. So those are the goals. I'm going to turn it over to Jessica now to dig, dive deeper into the character area policy and how we're defining what the community could look like in the future, as well as our approach to identifying individual sites across the county to provide enough space for the priority uses that have become important to the conversation.
All right. Good afternoon, good afternoon, good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be there, here with you. And I've really enjoyed working with Rhonda and every member of the steering committee to help draft these character areas to present to you that represent where, the type of development that the county would like to see and where. So first, we're going to go through the character areas and the maps that we're going to present to you. So first up is the, just an explanation of when we use the word "character areas," what we're referring to is a typology of a development pattern. So what type of use is there? The form that you would most likely see, the structures that you would most likely see, and the density. And then the priority uses, we heard from the community and from you all that there are some very important land uses in the county that you would like to preserve, conserve, and even potentially expand. So there are four priority uses that we will present to you this evening, and those are conservation, so areas that you would like to see protected into the future. Working farms, so knowing that this is, agriculture is a primary interest in this, making sure that it is preserved into the future for the people that are currently farming, but also for folks that may be interested in getting into the business and continuing it for their family. We also are looking at areas for jobs as well as schools because we know schools, as you build them, they almost fill up. So being, making sure that we're looking at potential locations for where schools might be good fit for, again, aligning that infrastructure capacity with those future locations. So that long story short that I just went through, this is a slide that explains everything. But again, the character areas are there to provide information on their primary and secondary uses, the lot size and the density that we can expect to see, and as well as the form patterns and street patterns. So what everybody should hopefully have now in your hands is a spread, as we call it, of each character area with photos of the land use, the transportation, and the open space elements. And I'm going to walk through each of these as we go through, so. But before I do, here is an overall map of where we anticipate based off of the input that we received from the steering committee and through the scenario planning workshops that we were out in October, of where people would like to see these types of care, like land uses. So So the most, probably more focused on open land, working farms, is gonna be your rural preserve. Those are areas that we're most likely to, that are very constrained for development. So think steep slopes, karst topography, natural resources. The moving up the density ladder would be work, the rural living, which where we most likely see those working farms and larger residential lots. And then county suburban, that is within the UGBs of all the municipalities in Rutherford County, and so really looking at more of the, probably what you're typically used to seeing of the single-family residential subdivisions and focusing that type of growth within the UGB areas of the municipalities. And then then, just recognizing the municipal boundaries of each of the Smyrna, Laverne, Murphysboro, and Eagleville. And then within those characters, we also have what we are calling centers. So there are more specific uses, mixed, potentially mixed uses, and we're calling those crossroads. So think about like Las Casas with the little county store at the corner, we're looking at those as crossroads. And then as you get more closer to the urban environment, the village centers, so more of your big-box stores, kind of storefront retail. And then the activity centers are, as we like to term them, wild cards in terms of, it's a, to be defined as things come up outside of the county. A good example I will give you is the Wilson County is the Speedway. That's a very specific targeted use that's unique to itself, and so that's what we're identifying, and really, there's only two on this map, up near Alma Ville and then on Eps Mill, and then up, of course, on 840 near Wilson County. So now that I went through the map, the character areas as we presented them, your first page is what this rural preserve lines up. And again, this is your most rural feature with natural, lots of natural constraints, so steep slopes, forestry, karst topography, really not ideal for development. And again, they are large acreages and the primary land uses you're most likely to see are, again, agriculture, open space, and some single-family homes within it, but lots of large lot residential, or, excuse me, large lot agricultural. Again, as we move up the density ladder, the next one is rural living, and this is where we're most likely to see a lot of the farmland and some of the large lot residential. So these are typically characterized by, again, the large lots, abundant open space, and a high degree of separation between buildings and structures. And the primary land use, again, is gonna be mostly your residential farmland and hobby farms. And I know Pettis and I have different definitions of hobby farms. But lot size, again, larger lots with very low lot coverage, so a lot of y'all that have worked with the zoning boards probably have seen the minimum lot size, or minimum lot coverage as a percent. So again, this is five to 10% lot coverage of structures. So again, very large lots with minimal structures on it. And then as you get into county suburban, again, this is within the, or the existing UGBs of the municipalities in Rutherford County. These are generally formed as subdivisions, so the, what you are typically seeing with the cul-de-sac-type development with the, I won't call it, the white-piglet fences, but it's mostly single-family detached homes that are gonna be connected through subdivision cul-de-sacs and may connect to other neighborhoods. Looking at higher lot coverage, so the 30 to 65 lot coverage, so you're getting into the smaller lots, smaller yards, and a lot of the, we call it borrowing their open space from their neighbors, so those folks that live next to a farm and look at cornfields, that's what we call kind of borrowed open space. So a lot of that reflected in this general area of the UGB area. And then these are the centers, as I mentioned earlier, where, so we have the four base character areas and municipal, I'm not gonna kind of self-explanatory it to the municipalities, so I'm gonna jump into the centers. This is a crossroads typology, so when you think of crossroads, I think the one that pops into my brain and the image that's been blurred out is Las Casas with the county store, but again, it's intended to serve kind of the immediate needs of the surrounding community and not gonna be your, like, drive-in, receive everything at Walmart. It's gonna be very specific items, very specific needs for the community. It could be a church, community center, again, a small convenience store, and it will have a, have a higher lot coverage, the one to five percent lot coverage, but again, more specifically tailored, tailored to serving the rural community. Then when you get up to the village center, again, this is coming into the municipal areas, UGB areas, the higher-density residential, so you're getting into the larger big-box stores with the storefronts to provide some of that more everyday items where people are gonna come, drive in and receive, buy goods and go home. But you probably can all imagine a suburban big-box store with a Kroger and some of the, a Chinese restaurant also in that, and some of the out parcels. So that's really the intent of the village centers. And then again, the activity centers, as it's the, a unique, specific spot that is going to be tailored. It provides flexibility in the Comprehensive Plan and flexibility in your subdivision and zoning regulations to modify and adapt to specific needs as they come in, is how we see this one. Alright, and now I'm gonna go into the priority uses. Again, as we mentioned throughout our conversations over the last two years, we heard a lot about what matters and is most important to residents in the county, and so the two top ones we heard the most often were, we love our rural farmland, we love the character that Rutherford has, we wanna preserve it for our children and our grandchildren. So the two first priority uses, as we're calling them, are conservation and working farms. And then the two last ones are focused on, again, making sure that we have identified areas for future employment job centers and for those school sites to make sure that they're as best-sided as we can with the infrastructure that was, is in place to support them or will be in place to support them in that time. So conservation areas, we're being pretty specific with this, this designation of being a permanently protected open space. So it's either a conservation easement that's held by a state, federal, or a nonprofit, and it's going to be like a state park that individuals, people can go and recreate at, and it may even be a wildlife refuge that is non-accessible to people and it's intended to be that wildlife habitat. It can be a cemetery, it could be a greenway, but these are protected, again, protected public open spaces. And this is a map of the existing, as of today, protected open spaces in the county. And I know when the Steering Committee first saw this, I think their first word was, that's not a lot of area. So just wanna, again, remind you, this is the land, the parcels that are under permanent conservation held by state, federal, or a nonprofit. So what we ask the Steering Committee and we ask you today is, what else? What else should be considered? What are the priorities for the county as we look forward into future areas for conservation? There are what we call environmental-sensitive areas, so you probably are thinking floodplain, karst topography, steep slopes, those places that would most likely be in or have the rural preserve-based character over the top of it. They could be greenbelt areas, it could be even historical or cultural resources such as the century farms and historic structures and communities. And we have lots of mapping, I don't know if we wanna go through the whole thing, but I will tell you, we have lots of maps available to give you an idea of all the areas that are environmentally sensitive and what that feeds into that, which is pretty much the entire county. Your flood hazards, your sinkholes and karst topography, wetlands, and then this is your prime farmland ag soils with what's already developed today laying over the top of it so you can see what is left. It's not considered developed farmland soils. We have critical habitats, so those endangered species, steep slopes, tree canopy, again, steep slopes, and any historic preservation sites that are already listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Alright, now the next priority use, which is working farm, which we heard a lot about, and Brooks Lamb was here back in August to talk a lot about the tools and other places that have prioritized agriculture and protection and preservation. So again, this is a priority use that we've identified for Rutherford County to consider. It is looking at, again, farmland, livestock, timber areas that would like to be conserve, protected, and potential implement, implementation tools and recommendations to make those actionable. So again, this is the prime ag soils that you, I showed earlier. This is a cropland map from the National Land Cover Database, so looking at what crop types of crops are out there. I will tell you, it does not recognize hay fields, 'cause it's very hard to tell what's a hay field versus what's somebody's side yard. So this is mostly gonna be like crops, cultivated cropland. We've identified all the century farms, livestock farms, and then this is a composite of all of the farmland that we know about in Rutherford County, to give you an idea of what's still in working farmland. And then looking at the next one, the two, last two are job centers and school sites, so job centers, really identifying areas where you'd like to see employment that's gonna be served by good transportation networks and utilities and infrastructure. And those are gonna be, we've pretty been very specific about the Eps Mill area in Alma Ville and then up again at the Wilson County line on 840. So if there is other places that you think are prime spots, we would definitely want to hear them. And then to school sites, I will tell you that right now, we are only showing the existing school sites, but we will have recommendations for, in the Comprehensive Plan for how locate, how to review and recommend locations for future school sites. And then I think I'm handing it back to Michael, right? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. So we are very much interested in your feedback on the character area policy, not only the geography associated with that, but the specifications that are associated with the definition for each of those. Also interested in your ideas for how to begin identifying recommendations for specific sites in those priority use, priority use categories, conservation areas, working farms, job centers, and school campuses. Where, what we're gonna be doing with Doug and Danielle and Eric and Karen over the next month while you all are reviewing draft one of the plan is coming up with some very tailored objectives and potential actions to help you implement the vision that's laid out in the first few chapters of the plan. So while y'all are reviewing the document, we're gonna be coming up with the second draft. We hope to get your feedback about a week after we're wrapped up with our work so that we can get it all integrated, get a second draft back to you. I'll show you the schedule here in a little bit. To give you an idea of what I mean by objectives and actions, so in terms of the goal of preserving character, a couple of objectives might be to protect prime farmlands, to support crossroads, which is a character area that Jessica talked about. Those would be objectives, they'd be spelled out a little bit more articulated than what I'm saying right now, but those are things that we're trying to achieve along the way of getting towards our goals. The plan is really gonna be, much of the needed, the plan is gonna be these actions. So what are the things that we need to do to achieve those objectives on our way towards those goals? And just to give you a couple of examples, within the objective of protecting prime farmlands would be updating your zoning code to make sure that you've got the regulatory tools to be able to do that when regulation is, is the better approach. But there's also just incentivizing and providing opportunities for people to profit or to gain some advantage through the mutual benefit of implementing the plan. So other, other types of actions would also be recommended, just, this isn't a recommendation yet, but the idea of transferring development rights to protect prime ag land across the county could be something that's considered by the county as it comes to the finish line with the plan. An idea, an example of an action that would be related to achieving the objective of supporting crossroads, character areas, is recognizing that this countywide Comprehensive Plan isn't gonna be specific enough in every case to define the vision for a neighborhood center or node, like a crossroad. And so the idea of subsequent to the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, Pursuing Small Area Plans that provide neighbors and residents and businesses within those very targeted areas to have another opportunity to vision, envision what more immediately would be happening around their neighborhood. So a couple of examples of how we're going to drill into objectives and ultimately into actions which become the basis of the recommendations from the policy that is the Comprehensive Plan. We're also gonna be identifying a bunch of tools, some of these regulatory in nature, some of them investment or incentive in nature, this, this being sort of power of the purse of the county government, its partners, to make sure that we're investing in infrastructure in a way that incentivizes development in the places that makes the most sense, also not allowing development to incur in places where there's no chance of infrastructure without negotiating some outcome that makes sure that the impacts to infrastructure is offset by allowing that development to move forward. And then the, the last category of tools would be the cooperation tools, just the, the things that really require people to work together in order to achieve the outcomes. And so there'll be a series of roles and responsibilities associated with those actions that are identified in the plan. So we're about to wrap up our part of this, maybe open it up for conversation. I'm gonna give you some, some guidance on how to review the document and provide feedback, both in terms of the document but also on the map that was shown on the screen earlier today. This is a look at our upcoming schedule. It does feel like we've been working on this for a while and, in some ways, in other ways, it feels like we've just started. A lot has changed since we began, but the good news is, I think we all wanna get to enough of a finish line so that the community, community understands what is in the minds of the County Commission and the Planning Commission when it comes to the policy for growth across the county to get their feedback. And for our part, we can have you there in the next three months. And so we've got about a month with this draft. You're reviewing this document while we're honing in on those objectives and actions. Those things come together in the form of a second draft that we will then get, check in with the Steering Committee before coming back to this group together to present that second draft, which would be essentially about a 90% build-out of the plan, still not the glossy version, but just to make sure that the recommendations for objectives and actions are aligned with your expectations. We'll get your feedback there and within the next month have the highly, high production value glossy version of the plan that will put in Chairman Reed's hands to get out to the public for review and comment and considered by the Planning Commission. Of course, we'll be on standby as you go through that public review and comment process, happy to make any edits, revisions necessary that are sourced from that input, but otherwise plan to turn this over to the Planning Commission by the end of October. Okay, so as far as, you know, a couple of suggestions for how to review the document, you know, some people are old-school and you're gonna get out your red pen, you're gonna mark up the paper copy, and we welcome that. I think probably the best approach to turning that in would be maybe to coordinate with Doug and his staff, and he can get all those compiled and on to us, and we'll track all these changes and we'll make revisions, we'll link them back to the input that we're getting. If, if input doesn't turn into revisions, we'll document that as well and explain why that is the case. But for those of you who wanna sort of explore things online, we've got this document online right now, geneerc.org/plans/planrutherford. I'll pull up that website in a minute. There is an ability for you to print it out and mark it up, but you also can comment with sticky notes through the web browser and then download that and send that in. And then there's an interactive map of the character areas that we talked about this evening, and I'll demonstrate just very briefly how you can interact with that resource online as well to leave your, your, your comments. So I'm happy to do that now, Chairman Reed, Chairman Phillips, or I can do that after your closing remarks. Would you like me to, it could be a little awkward going to the browser, but I'm happy to do that now, or would y'all like to wrap up? And then for those that are interested in seeing the online resources, I can stick around and do that.
This is supposedly a work session between the County Commission and the Planning Commission. Any commissioners that are here that have questions, now would be the time to ask them. And we'll also open it up for anyone that has a question or comment that And we'll also open it up for anyone that has a question or comment that they may want to make. So, now's the time to do that, if you have questions. You can also hold those until we get into the second draft at some particular morning time, but I wouldn't hold them. If you have questions, ask them now. If those questions become, if, if those questions, if you develop those questions over the next couple of weeks, make sure you address them through the County Commission. And I'd also like to thank Rhonda and her staff, the Steering Committee, for all the work that they've done. It's not an easy thing to do, but Rhonda's extremely qualified to, to chair that Steering Committee, and we'll personally thank you, Rhonda, and all the work that you've done. But, right now, we'll kind of open it up for some questions or some comments. If you have any of those, we'll try our best to address them.
And we've got some staff with mics, so if you raise your hand, they'll get to you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Michael. You probably hear me without the mic, but on, on page 26, this is a city boy question, and as soon as I ask it, my ag friends are going to say, "That's a city boy."
That's what I'm going to ask Jessica to answer it for you.
Okay. In the-
In the description of rural preserve on the bottom of page 26, you, you mentioned, as I was taking notes, it says, "This is typically steep slopes, cars, topography, not suitable for building, but suitable for agriculture." So, my city boy question is, if it's lots of rock, how can that be suitable for agriculture?
Yeah, I don't-
Because if you look at the colored map, that's about one-third of the county.
Yeah, I don't think we mean both of those necessarily at the same time, so that's a, that's really good feedback to make sure that the language is accurately reflecting the diversity of what could be happening within that rural preserve area.
So, for my farmer friends, can, can you really plant and grow?
Livestock.
Livestock, okay.
And timber, and timber.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think it may be good for us to give examples of the type of agriculture that could be happening within rural preserve, instead of just generalizing it. That's a great comment. Yes, sir.
I noticed we've got cameras here, and y'all are feminists. I just want to make sure that this is also put on our Rutherford County television.
It's, it's being, I believe it's being streamed live through MTSU. It is actually being recorded. It will be available on Channel 19 probably next week sometime, but it will be available, and it'll be reshown several times on Channel 19.
My main concern is getting this out to our communities.
Any other, we got a few questions, and right, right behind you first, and we'll come forward.
Now, my name is Jeff. I was curious, when you did your listening sessions, did you break it out by age groups from, when you gathered and inputted it, was it by age groups? And if you did, was a significant difference in views or wants or needs between 18 to 25 versus 30 to 50, for example?
Yes, sir. And the, in terms of breaking out things by demographics, it's a lot easier to do that with the survey responses, but we did record the nature of the participation at these workshops. Jessica, do you want to make any conclusion in terms of differences and perspective based on sort of where you fall in the life cycle?
I mean, I, I would, I would be happy to get back to you on it. I don't want to speak offhand, because it's not something I'm extremely familiar with off the top of my head. I do know that we had a higher percentage of older adults take the survey and come to the workshops, so.
One thing, though, I mean, I want to underscore, this is a conversation we've had with the Steering Committee quite a bit, is that, you know, I've been part of comprehensive planning efforts for 20, 25 years, and it's rare you get a bunch of consensus around a couple of concepts, and I think no matter how long you've been here, you could, you know, whether it's been 20, 30 years, or five years, a lot of people come to Rutherford County partly because of its proximity to amenities and urban environments, but also it's the beauty of the rural countryside that even newcomers don't want to see lost at, you know, expense of growth. And so, there's a lot of conversation about conservation of the rural countryside. Those that have been here for a while, that are farming the land, are working the land, they don't want to lose those opportunities. The state, as the state economy doesn't want to see those opportunities lost either. But there's a lot of commonality in terms of the perspective when it comes to the conservation in the rural areas of the county. And so, then the challenge becomes, well, how do you accommodate the growth that is likely still going to choose to come here? And that's another part of this plan, is that this is, obviously, the Planning Commission and the County Commission's jurisdiction is outside of the municipalities, in the unincorporated part of the county, but to get growth accommodated in places in close proximity to infrastructure and places that can actually support the movements of the people and the jobs that are around here, it's going to require a lot of coordination with the municipalities. And so, that'd be a part of what Doug and I, Jessica are working on over the next couple of weeks, is to figure out what that coordination should look like, how much of that should be embedded in policy versus practice or procedure. I, I know there's already coordination between the planning departments, but also recognition that a lot more interactivity could be happening on a regular basis as developments are proposed and reviewed for approval across the, across the county.
General question, as I tried to digest through some of this for future questions come through, more technical. On your plan goal slide, goal number one, you listed, can you better define your parameters for what you call settled areas? Settled areas?
These, Jessica, I believe our intent here are, these are places that are not incorporated, or sort of a known definition by place name, but there's clearly a clustering of some sort of mixed use happening around a crossroad-type environment.
Are you talking about the goal one, manage growth, or are you talking about?
Yeah, and settled areas, right there, that second line.
Oh, and settled areas, yeah, so like the, the unincorporated places. So, like the Las Casas, the Milton, Ketchkill, places that are, there's already a nexus or a support of community. Does that make sense?
I just, yeah, I just kind of wanted to see what parameter, how big or how small that, that would qualify, or, you know, push it out of that.
Thank you for that.
Hi, I was just curious, I wanted to thank you guys for your work on this, and I was wondering, how does this align with some of the challenges that we're having through our wastewater treatment and our discharges, also our water allocation, and how does this tie into the 2018 Army Corps of Engineer report that was showing, you know, that we was going to have challenges with our water availability? And then, third, third and fourth, I guess, is how does this align with, like, flood mitigation in our county and those special areas for, like, reducing flood problems, and kind of looking at it from our soil map units and our high water table and, and kind of flood-prone areas, so that we protect against disaster mitigation in our county, too? Can you kind of talk about those a little bit?
Well, why, I can absolutely sort of reinforce the question by sharing one of the statistics that we came across when we were analyzing the trend growth pattern, the, you know, the 2045-year picture based on our current trajectory. We were noticing about a 400% increase in risk associated with development that was vulnerable to flooding. And so, it is really important that you get public policy right, so that you're not putting folks and property in harms ra- harms way, and not only a personal cost issue, but a financial toll on the county and ratepayers when it comes to insurance and cleanup and recovery and rebuilding. So, a good part about the infrastructure capacity of water and how to manage storm water, that will be a big part of what we talk about in aligning infrastructure, is looking at the vision that's been established through the community, community character area, understanding what capacity exists to support development in those areas, to know what needs to be built, how much that would cost, is that sustainable? Those are the types of issues that we'll be getting in, in those chapters, that relate to preserving character, enabling prosperity, and aligning infrastructure.
But does it go into great detail about the water allocation and any of the future risks with our growth already, the high growth? Is there a lot of death in that regard?
So, a comprehensive plan is going to acknowledge those issues and measure some degree of potential impact, and create, create policies or proposed actions to try to steer you away from those conflicts. But it's not a regulatory document, it's not going to allocate resources to deal with the problem, it's just going to bring the problem to attention and make sure you're not making decisions that have the unintended consequences of putting yourself in situations where you are out of capacity on an aspect of infrastructure, or exposing new development to risks that otherwise could have been avoided. And that's what's really key about understanding that the, and I think one of the chairs said this at the beginning, the comprehensive plan is really important, it's the guiding document for how you'll make subsequent decisions, but those subsequent decisions will need to be made, and they'll be, they'll be also subject to the regulations and codes that the county have, have at their disposal beyond just the comprehensive plan policy itself.
Michael Doug could probably address groundwater use and how we mitigate from an engineering perspective. Doug, can you address that lady's questions as it relates to, maybe, maybe Mike can as well? Is there a microphone? Oh. So, live stream, guarantee. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, oh, wow, okay. When it comes to flood, and Mike Hughes, our county engineer, is here, obviously, you'll smack me upside the head if I don't say something right, but when it comes to flood mitigation and those kind of things, of course, we are looking at the 100-year flood by, delineated by FEMA in every project that we look at. Not only do we do that, I know Mike and his staff are very diligent about looking at any development that comes through the county, even if it's not in a designated flood area through FEMA, there are a lot of local flood areas due to sinkholes and other things that won't show up on a floodplain map, but those are things that we're aware of, and things that have potential to happen. So, whenever time, anytime development is brought into our office, that is something we look at very, very diligently. I know Mike and his staff are very concerned to not, you know, approve any development that's going to cause any negative impact to those developing that property or on adjacent properties. I mean, there are times when we recommend flood elevations for properties that are not within 100-year floodplains. Again, it's to protect the people who are going to be building these houses, those who may buy those houses, you know, five, 10 years down the road, whenever those are. But the same goes through with the, being members of the National Flood Insurance Program. You know, there are certain things we have to do to stay in compliance with that as far as flood elevations and different things. Mike, did you want to add anything to that?
Well, and this is a good example of the, the partnership between the comprehensive plan policy and then the land development review process that is implementing the zoning subdivision, division regulations, stormwater regulations, and the other, other things that speak to the, the specific decisions that are being made about an individual piece of property.
Just real quick, could you go to, forward to a slide regarding, I didn't get a chance to get a picture of it, which looked really bad, on the ordinances that the county could do to help-
Control some of those things.
Oh, that's cool. Yes. Could try to not make people sick.
Close your eyes.
Yeah, close your eyes. All right. Is that, that going your little far? Okay.
I have a question, or I guess more comment, concern, feedback, a little bit concerning plan goal number three, specifically the mix of housing options to support affordable quality of life. Just taking a little bit of a look at the community characters that I'm holding in my hand, I'm seeing a lot of restrictions as far as housing under the less suitable. Even looking at this slide, I think something that goes hand in hand with this is probably going to be zoning ordinance, and I know we haven't seen really the implementation piece of this, it'll probably be in the later versions, but I think something that is important to keep in mind is taking a look at possibly missing middle housing, and some of those zoning strategies that can be put in place to help with the lack of housing units that we are seeing in the Middle Tennessee area. Because if you just take a look at the greater national metro area, which Murfreesboro is included in, you would have to have at least 5,000 units, if not more, through 2030 to even keep up with the pace of growth. So, my concern would be implementing some of these as far as different zoning that would go with this different community character would, in fact, actually not allow the Middle Tennessee area to keep up with growth. And I think looking at missile emitting, missile, missing middle housing is very important, because if you zone for single-family housing, typically, that makes it illegal to have missing middle housing. And the things I'm thinking about when I talk about that is like fourplexes, cottage-style homes, which typically are the same size as a single-family home, they just allow four, of course, more units. So, I would just suggest to take a look at those things when we're thinking about the implementation process. I don't know if you guys have started to take a look at that, especially with zoning, if you have any feedback, but I just want to provide that as something that would, I think, be very helpful to keep in mind going forward with this, considering how many units we are behind here in Middle Tennessee.
Well, and I think part of what I'm hearing is that we're, we're sort of stuck in the middle in some regard, because a lot of what you're talking about, we support as, you know, professional planners, we understand the, the needs of the community, and that it's got to go somewhere. You know, part of, one of, one of the challenges with developing a comprehensive plan for an unincorporated area is that it's unincorporated, and it lacks the resources to provide the infrastructure necessary to support some of that type of product. And so, a lot of what the comp plan, I think, is going to need to do before all's said and done, is really spell out that coordination with the municipalities, particularly in that urban growth boundary outside of the existing city limits, so that if there is an opportunity to address the middle housing issue in, outside of the city limits, that there's coordination, or some expectation for the extension of services and infrastructure to support that before that development is approved. And so, what we want to make sure we're doing, though, is not allowing high density to just happen by right in places that don't have any commitment to the infrastructure. That is what leads to a lot of the sort of anti-growth sentiment that we're hearing across Middle Tennessee. You know, a few years ago, I think we were all very happy about the growth and development, we thought of it in terms of bringing prosperity, but now, when we see our infrastructure being outpaced, it becomes a significant concern, because it begins to impact quality of life and drives up our costs in other areas. And so, I think that there's a lot of support for the goal that you're, that you're describing here, and I think we've got to figure out how to sort of have a policy for the unincorporated part of the county, while still recognizing that the community is going to want to see in their plan how we're addressing those problems that they're dealing with every single day.
Yeah, and the only thing I'll add is, I feel like in these conversations, we're always talking about people coming, but there's already people here that are in need of affordable housing, or I should say attainable housing, and starter homes, you know, we need those options for those folks that are already here, they're already Tennesseans, they're already Rutherford Countians, we need those options for them, and they don't have those options currently. Just take a look at the inventory that we are seeing, the lowest we've seen in history. So, I, I understand that, I think that sometimes it gets lost in the sauce as far as the folks that are already here that need that, and these, this plan is going to affect them as well, as well as the folks that are planning on moving to wonderful Rutherford County in the future as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. On the side of the room?
Yes, I'm one of the local farmers, and in y'all's process of trying to preserve and even start, as somebody said earlier, has it been talked about on how much farming, this comes from one of the maps that y'all show, there's a lot of farming going on that y'all don't have mapped, because I farm two or three people's land that they're not claiming farming. So, with that, in, in the future, when you're talking about planting and preserving, make the, whatever the incentives are, available to landowners, not just farmers, so that we can continue farming the land with whatever the incentives y'all come up with, but the landowner that's, can receive an incentive for letting me come farm his land.
That makes sense, and in fact, we just had this conversation in the office the other day about how are we going to identify these areas that aren't in public data sets or easily identifiable through spatial analysis, and so, I think the only way to do that is to talk to people like you, and so, if you stick around after the meeting, I'd love to brainstorm a little bit on how to fill in the missing information when it comes to the agricultural opportunities, because they, they, they do extend beyond those areas of the map that I just, that Jessica showed you, and if we get too stuck on what, where something is on a map through this process, I think it, you know, it's sort of is counterproductive in terms of maintaining flexibility to achieve the goals that we set after.
But also, with that, include the, the marketplace for the farming in the rural area to sell its product. Most of my product goes out of county now, so, and, so, and out of state even. So, create the, recreate- So create the, recreate the economic base. Thank you.
That makes sense. Thank you for that question. Any other questions this evening? Yes, sir.
To follow up to that, those unclaimed farm land, aren't they missing a tax incentive already? It has to be 15 acres or more.
And there's a lot of farming happening on plots of land, much smaller than that.
Do you have access to the green belt records? For everybody in trade.
I believe we, I believe we do. Chairman?
When you mentioned those tracts of land and where they're, where they're located and when we're talking about farming, this morning I was in a pretty good long conversation with Kevin Ferguson. Some of you may remember, he sat here at this last meeting, and we got talking about a lot of the farms that are not recognized. Do you know you have a farm in downtown Murfreesboro? You have a farm in downtown Murfreesboro. It's in a garage, but it's classified as a farm by the State of Tennessee. They have enough production in a garage sitting here in Murfreesboro. Now, you have people that meet the production amounts sitting in garages around here. Now, as I talked to him, my head started hurting when I started thinking about what all we will have to deal with, there's a lot of these things, but it also made me feel pretty good of what you're talking about back there. This is some of the things we're talking about. If there's some way we have, so we've got young farmers that are still wanting to farm, but they can't find the land. If there's some way we can get together to find the land where they can continue to farm, but give those incentives right here in Rutherford County, bypassing the state of Tennessee, but doing it with here and keeping those farms in active production. So I was talking to him about that. Are there other counties doing this? Where can you do this? Where are you going to get this? There are a lot of things and a lot of opportunities as we go about putting this together and where we can go with it. And just exactly in what you're talking about there. But when he told me about the farming that's going in right here in downtown Murfreesboro, and what's happening is these individuals are coming to Murfreesboro City Council asking to be classified as a farm, it's planning in Murfreesboro and their city council don't know what exactly to do with them. And I totally understand that. So we're having to go back to the state's classification for a farm. And a farm, you don't have to have a certain amount of acreage. You have to have the production. So this is where we're, where we're at right now and what we're trying to do out here. So you bring up a good question right there, and it's quite interesting. As I asked him about, does he know of other counties? He says, you might want to be careful with that. There's other counties that are doing things that, that might not be what you want to do. He says it needs to be doing what you think works for Rutherford County, and I think that's what we're attempting to do.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's also important not to cram a bunch of actions into this document, just assume that every best practice is the right practice for Rutherford County. And so that's what we're going to be looking at with Doug and his staff over the next month, is what are the right combination of actions that we should be taking in this county to achieve your vision? Any other questions, comments, feedback this evening?
I happen to be the, I guess it's working. I happen to be the newest member of the planning commission, so I'm, I'm being the ears of the community. 67 years old this month. We talk about infrastructure, and I keep hearing about infrastructure. What we're having today is we've got folks that are buying properties in speculation. There's a lot of property already out there that's bought with speculation to being able to build, build subdivisions or, in the cases that is not open for me, are the PUDs that have been adopted in the past. The infrastructure is not here in the rural areas when you get outside the city limits of five miles. There's no plan for our infrastructure here in Rutherford County on the road system. We've got a great maintenance system, but there's not a road system. So whenever I sit in these meetings and I hear someone say, well, we, we got, this, this meets traffic study. I told the engineer the other night, I'm through listening to traffic studies. Traffic studies does not mean anything to me. I happen to live in the city. I go up and down a road that the city took over called Rucker Lane. There's a section on there where the road's caved, caved in, it's caved away. It's the infrastructure. So if we're going to build on these, I hear the young lady here talking about affordable housing, and I've got a granddaughter that's just bought a house in a condo in the city of Murfreesboro, and when I was by there today, there's probably 25 units available to be bought right now. Those areas have infrastructure for that type of housing. The rural people do not want those type of houses sitting at 15 miles out with all that traffic coming in on these roads that are not prepared for that. So that's one of the dilemmas that I think that we've really got to talk about in terms of infrastructure and how we're going to deal with the cost of infrastructure. Who's going to pay for that infrastructure? I hear about farmlands. I don't know how we're going to stop somebody from selling a farm. And if I'm a family and I have 400-acre farm, and it's between me and three brothers or four sisters, I don't know that you're going to stop that. Money talks. And that's, that's an issue that if I owned a farm like that and I wanted to develop it, I'd be talking about infrastructure to build the type of homes that the young lady is mentioning. But until we have the infrastructure with a plan, this county and the citizens in this county are not interested in seeing those outside in, in rural areas. As far as the areas that are already purchased in speculation, they need to be platted now for planning. And I'll give you an example. For me personally, in rural part of the community, I've got a parcel of land that I bought. I had it rezoned for my use, and during the last comprehensive plan in 2011, I think, that went away, so I've got to go back again when I get ready to expand it as a business owner. I bought the land at a premium price at that time. If these situations are occurring and I'm planning better than the planning of the county, I don't need to lose what I already have. The developers that have bought land that they're prospecting on, that needs to be platted as well, because we need to see what that looks like. And that's where we need to be talking about getting priority on infrastructure. And we need state help, we need our delegation helping to support that, not fighting it.
Well, thank you for those comments. I mean, you really bring to light a lot of the conflicts, conflicts that exist in a planning process like this. One of the reasons why these are difficult is because the comprehensive plan is really trying to get ahead of the game, is trying to think 25 years from now, where should the infrastructure go? And part of the reason why we do that is so that for somebody who wants to buy land as an investment to develop, they have essentially a blueprint for where that infrastructure is going to be, and they make a, make a good decision about where they may speculate, as you, as you say. It's difficult for a comprehensive plan to just come out of nowhere and say, you can't sell your farm, you can't develop the land that you bought two years ago. And that's not the intent of a comprehensive plan. If somebody wants to sell their farm, they're going to sell their farm. No comprehensive plan in America is going to keep them from doing that. But as a community, if you say, I want to preserve these areas in agricultural use, you can change the equation that's out there today that's leading to the decisions to sell farms. And there are demonstrated practices that allow you to do that, not to save every farm that, you know, Jerry Jane wants to save, you know, 20 miles from their house, but begin changing that equation so that conversion rate is lower. Because as you know, once it's gone, it's, it's gone, then really come back. I mean, agriculture can come back in, in terms of getting to product, but you know, in terms of like the large lot farms, those aren't, aren't likely coming back. And so some amount of conservation, I think, is something that is of interest to people. And the more we can get ahead of the game to find the vision or the blueprint for where we want to do that, the more we communicate that intent, the more people can be creative to figure out how to get there. But I agree, I think, you know, if you're Johnny come lately to a decision that somebody's already made, that's, you're not going to probably stop that. But again, that's not the intent of the comprehensive plan. It's one of the things that's difficult to talk about during the planning process, is that this is really more about what's happening five, 10, 15 years from now. The things that are happening now are being decided based on a framework that was, you know, developed a decade ago or a war. So we're thinking about the future more than we're thinking about, you know, tomorrow.
I just, I hate to bring this up again, it kind of ties in, I think, to what he's saying is, we're talking about our infrastructure, but I think we keep looking at it as roads and housing, but am I mistaken to understand that our wastewater and our water are both contributing factors to our infrastructure and how we can grow? And is that being addressed well so that people are understanding before they buy plots of land? That's something that, unless I'm mistaken, I just feel like that hasn't been answered well with what the Army Corps of Engineers said they're going to give us for water and what we know we can discharge for wastewater. So I appreciate the flooding, but I'm just wondering, that water is a huge issue, and I've asked this question from the watershed perspective since 2018, and I just haven't felt like we've really addressed that publicly very well, and that's going to drive everything. And so I didn't feel like we answered that in this meeting. I just want to make sure that that is definitely included in the plan is, what are the water, not just for our county, but how do we, how is water being looked at from the Middle Tennessee region? And then our wastewater, how is that contributing to these site constraints that we have? Because we're in a basin, and so we're going to have constraints of what we can do. And I just want to make sure that's really addressed before we go into draft two, to where the public can look at that as well. And, and so our developers know exactly what they're getting into and that we're protecting our resources, you know, as well, all the way around.
Yeah, and for sure, there are no infrastructure recommendations in this first draft, right? It's about validating the vision for community character and those priority uses. But a comp plan is probably going to stop at assessing the existing and planned capacity for infrastructure and providing some opportunities for best practices to bring online more infrastructure or to acknowledge limited resources, natural resources, that may not be available to support that growth, but it's not going to get to engineering level sort of solution to, you know, a problem.
I fully agree. The 2010 plan said water will restrict growth. And I just feel like we, I haven't heard anybody talk really about water through this entire process. I've brought it up, I've talked to several commissioners about it. I know it's not very popular to talk about, but we're having water, you know, allocation issues in Middle Tennessee, and I think it's, I think we need to make sure that's included in a comprehensive plan and spelled out, not at a depth level, but how does that compare to our growth and those number projections that was in our water allocation report?
You're talking about sourcing water, too, is also the water delivery system, and there just aren't, that, that sort of delivery system also doesn't exist in places that, you know, a speculative buyer may buy a piece of land thinking that they can put, you know, 100 houses on. So getting that mapped out, you know, comparing that capacity to where community thinks we should grow, identifying the mismatches so we can avoid those is really the intent of the comprehensive plan. But to understand the impact of a development on that infrastructure is something that's going to be analyzed at a much higher level of scrutiny through the land development review process. All right, I'm getting the hook. Well, so I'm going to stick around a little bit, if you're interested in accessing these online resources, Mr. Chair, but thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. And Jessica, thank you as well. Rhonda, thank you for the steering committee. And all of you commissioners, whether you're planning or county commissioners, mayor's office, thank you for being here. It's an exciting time for me. It's a, a process that has been near and dear to my heart since 1992, and this comprehensive plan is important to me, and I think it's pretty important to a lot of people that have attended the meetings. And really, what the plan actually does in my mind is identify areas that should be rural and kept rural, and areas that are urban that could better handle high-density growth. In a nutshell, what we're doing is looking at rural areas, and this is what we keep hearing as planning commissioners, month after month after month after month. I moved here to be in the country, and our response to them is pretty much there's no country in Rutherford County anymore. But that's what we're trying to do, is to protect those rural areas and put more high-density where it actually belongs, which is in the urban areas. Speaking of farms, it's up to us as county government to look at incentivizing those agricultural rezoned or zoned agricultural farms. It's up to us to help protect those farms and incentivize those agricultural farms to remain as farms. And that's also a job that we, as commissioners, will be looking at after we adapt, after we adopt our long-term comprehensive plan, once again, to protect those farms that want to be protected. Does that mean we're going to force folks into a rezoning situation? The answer is absolutely, positively no. But if you own a farm, Charlotte P., if you own a farm, and you do, and you have the opportunity to rezone it from residential medium density to agriculture, what are you going to do? Rezone it into a farm, and hopefully the county can give some incentive for those farmers to remain farms, especially the century farms and the family farms that are held down generation after generation. Once again, thank you for being here. I really, we really appreciate your participation tonight. And there's no document that's going to satisfy every individual, but if we can come up with a consensus that's going to be acceptable for the community, our goal has been reached. Let me paraphrase in closing just one particular thing. There's a, a verse in Romans, chapter 12, verse two, and I've kind of paraphrased this a little bit, so pay attention to what I say. "Do not be conformed to this age, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind so that you may discern what is the good, pleasing, acceptable will of the citizens of Rutherford County." Be not conformed to this age, but be transformed to what Rutherford County could be and would be into the future. Thank you. Pettis?
We've got one more pass out. It's this map, it's laying over on the table, we could get one of those to everybody here. Before you leave, I want to make sure each one of you gets one of these. I happened to be in the mayor's office several weeks ago, and I was waiting to see the mayor, and laying over there on the cabinet, happened to be over there in his papers, was one of these. Yeah, I was reading his mail over there and that he left out there, and I slipped this map out, and I was allowed to take it out of his office. And no, this wasn't anything, this wasn't anything that was confidential or whatever, somebody else had left it for him. But I thought y'all might enjoy this, but this is Rutherford County Municipality's Urban Growth Boundaries. But I want you to take a look at this, take it home and study it just a bit. This is your Rutherford County, and if you will notice the white area on this map, right here, the white area, that's all we've got to work with. That's all we have left, that's all we got to work with, and that's what we're talking about trying to plan. The other is Murfreesboro and their urban growth area. The other is Smyrna and their urban growth area. That's Laverne, the green is Laverne, and I'm sorry, they don't have a whole lot of urban growth area to work with. But I want you to see this, I've, I've had this, and I've sat there and looked at it a lot of times, said, hey, this is all we have to work with, and that's why we're taking this pretty serious in what we're trying to do. This was our last comprehensive plan, and it went through the same process and what we're trying to do. we're trying to do, and we thought this was the greatest thing since sliced bread. We thought it had everything covered, it was everything fixed. I see a few members of that group that did this, but before we knew it, it was out of date. Didn't work. We use it now, we put it on things, but this comprehensive plan did not go before the full commission and was approved. We're hoping that this one that we're doing right now goes before the commission, it becomes approved, it becomes something more than just a tool. It's something that we can actually use within this county to make it work, and that's why we're trying our best to study hard to make it work, and that's why we're glad we're here. As I'm sitting back here tonight, I looked out across here, not only the commissioners and the planning commissioners we have here, I see our engineering firms that I set up there as planning commissioner, I see you come before us. I say we have some of the best engineering firms around here. I get phone calls from them, I get questions, they give me the opportunity to talk to them about different development. I see developers here tonight that have been here a part of Rutherford County for many years, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Yeah, we at the Planning Commission look at different things, we don't agree on different things, but we also say, well, bring it back and let's look at it again. And I think that's good. We can work together. The important thing that we can do is work together, and I think that's what's kept Rutherford County what Rutherford County is. And what we're trying to do here now is to keep Rutherford County what it is, and we need your help to do this. I appreciate all of you being here and being a part of this tonight. I'm going to ask at this time, our chairman of our steering committee, if she would like to say a few words, and we'll ask Rhonda to do this. Rhonda has been an important part of our planning commission and our county commission for many years, and I think she's been an important part of this steering committee. Rhonda?
I'm going to be your favorite speaker. Thank you and good night.